Thank you for your patience. We had executive session before this and we took an extra couple of minutes, so thank you. I will call this regular meeting of the Talon Town Council to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Please stand. So item number three on our agenda is Proclaimations and Presentations. We have one proclamation this month, or tonight, and I will read it. The town of Talon is a welcoming, inclusive community and an exceptional place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas the town of Talon recognizes the importance of equity, justice, and freedom for all. And whereas the United States honors the 1969 Stonewell uprising and First Pride March in New York City in June 1970, with Americans coming together to remember the courage and accomplishments made over multiple generations to advance the rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender and queer plus people. And whereas our LGBTQ plus neighbors who work in town, own a business, live in our community, or raise their family here are an integral part of Talon's population. And whereas the town of Talon strives to make our town one where LGBTQ plus residents can thrive with dignity and protection and the opportunity to live their most open, authentic lives. And whereas the town of Talon acknowledges rising challenges and threats to the LGBTQ plus rights, representation, and respect requires continuous education, awareness, and compassion to end prejudice and discrimination. And whereas it is vital our youngest residents, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel seen, safe, supported, and empowered by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas Talon is proud to support and protect the civil rights of the LGBTQ plus community as part of our community's collective freedoms. And now therefore, the Talon Town Council on behalf of the citizens of Talon proclaims June 2024 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Talon to be affixed on this June 11th, 2024. Katie Starger, Chair of Talon. We shall now move on to public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit. I do see we have a lot of people here today, so we can try to keep it to the two minutes. There is another opportunity to speak at the end of the agenda with a three-minute limit. So typically, I start in the room and then go back and forth between the in-person room and the Zoom room. If you would like to speak, you can come up to the table if you may. Please give us your name and address. So start in the room. Would someone like to start? Nope. Okay, I'll go to Zoom. Oh, come on up.
John Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. Currently, a new well has been installed at my property, but it still hasn't tested well. Here we are about a month later from the initial well drilling. This is the fourth one, for those people that are counting, and yet we are still without a potable source of water. There is hope that this well will become productive, but we currently, with the way it currently sits, is still testing positive for bacteria. One interesting thing to note is that during the drilling of the well, the power to my home needed to be disconnected, which was convenient for the town because I was not actively living at the property, but now the tables have turned. If I had been living at the property full-time, I would have needed temporary accommodations based on the fact that I had no power. But this didn't end up being the case. Now, though, I am being asked to flow water every day at the property so we can flush this new well and hopefully bring it into production. This is very inconvenient because I am not actively living there. I have to travel each day to my property several times, turning the water on and off. I ask, is there anyone else that can be doing this? I was not the one that contaminated this well. This is a known fact. I'm hopeful that this well will become productive, and then this, there might be an end to me coming to Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine, and we will invite you to unmute. Is anyone online? Go back to the room. Anyone in the room?
Hello, Amanda Hickey, 11 Mitchell Circle. Town Council members, the education system plays a vital role in shaping the future of our town. Our schools provide essential services to our children, preparing them for success in an ever-changing world. Any further cut to the Board of Education budget will have serious consequences for our students, teachers, and overall education quality. Here are a few reasons why I believe preserving funding for the Board of Education is crucial. One, quality of education. Our schools need adequate resources to provide quality education. Further cuts could lead to larger class sizes, further reduction of programs, and the use of outdated material, ultimately affecting student learning outcomes. Teacher retention. Our dedicated teachers deserve fair compensation and support. Additional cuts may force talented teachers to leave, impacting the stability and continuity of our school. And three, community investment. A strong education system attracts families to our town. Well-funded schools contribute to property values and overall community well-being. After the budget failed on May 7th, Town Council reduced the Board of Education budget by approximately $100,000. After the budget failed on May 21st, the Board of Education's budget was cut by approximately $27,000. Now, we're here after the budget failed again on June 4th by 26 votes, and the response was to cut the Board of Education's budget by $645,000. I strongly oppose this decision. It's beyond my comprehension why any Town Council members would cut the Board of Education budget without considering cuts to any other areas of the budget. The repeated budget failures and subsequent cuts to the Board of Education raise valid questions about priorities and decision-making. Clearly, the taxpayers do not support ongoing cuts to the Board of Education. Otherwise, the budget would have passed during one of the previous votes. It's disheartening that no reductions were made to the general government or capital improvements despite the challenges faced by the education system. The impact on students' success and overall quality of education is a critical consideration. I encourage continued advocacy for a balanced approach that supports both education and physical responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, we're going to keep this meeting pretty straightforward, so thank you very much for your enthusiasm, but if you'd please respect the rest of us, I appreciate it. So online, it looks like, we'll start with Sarah Soroka. Start to unmute.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Soroka. I live at 58 Mountain Laurel Drive. Good evening, members of the Talon Town Council. I'm joining you tonight, online, not only as a concerned citizen, but as an educator, a parent in town, and a passionate advocate for all of our children's future in Talon. Crafting these words has not been easy, as the recent decisions have deeply disappointed many residents who believe in the power and importance of our educational system. The Board of Education and Superintendent Willett have worked tirelessly to navigate the treacherous waters of budget cuts and dwindling resources. Their dedication has been unwavering, yet their efforts seem to be constantly overshadowed by the constant demand for further cuts. Many staff members, high school teachers are being let go, and now the Town Council is asking for more. This is beyond unacceptable. You can imagine my shock, frustration, and anger, as well as disappointment, as I witnessed the proceedings of the Town Council meeting. It is disheartening to see some of our Town Council members favoring cuts to the Board of Education budget instead of exploring alternate solutions. Our role and your role as town leaders is to support and find ways to sustain our community and its future. Yet the support for these detrimental cuts suggests otherwise. It is imperative as a community that we move forward and support the Board of Education budget. Our previous defeat was merely 26 votes, and that highlights how crucial every decision and every vote is. Despite the economic challenges we face, this budget was crafted with the intent to propel our town forward in education. It is your duty as a Town Council to ensure that the children of this community are provided with the best opportunities for success. We must invest in Talon schools. Our schools are the cornerstone of our community, attracting families, fostering growth and excellence. I urge you to reconsider the proposed cuts and take into action the long-term impact of our children's futures. Class sizes, individual attention, technology, academic resources, support staff are all vital components in thriving in these educational environments. Cutting these essential elements undermines the very foundation of what makes Talon schools great. Let us not forget, again, that we're discussing a margin of only 26 votes. This narrow difference underscores the potential for a different outcome, and there have been more thoughtful problem solving. We have to prioritize our children's future and their education in ensuring they receive the best support and resources possible. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll go back to the room. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Karen Moran, 15 Monroe Way. The highest purpose of debate is not to persuade, it's to teach and learn. In productive disagreements, both people gain knowledge on the topic, wisdom on the process, and understanding of each other. A successful argument sharpens skill in both reasoning and listening. If only our council could do what our public education system is teaching our children. I've not witnessed any negotiation or healthy debate from this entire council over our community budget. From some, yes, but not all. Recent $645,000 cut to the Board of Education seems conveniently similar to the energy payment amount moved from the Board of Operating Budget to the town's debt surplus. And this seems more about retaliation via backroom puff poetry than any kind of responsible budgeting. I hope the public is catching on to this ruse that's going on because the children of Talon are being used as pawns in your backroom retaliation. The conspiracy theories and misinformation on open discussion are a travesty to this community, and we will all lose in our education system, in our home values, and in the resources a civil community relies on. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Go to Kate Vallow. Kate, unmute.
Hi there.
Kate?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Kate Vallow, AD Talon Green. Thanks for the opportunity to share some thoughts this evening. So my understanding was that the town's mental health task force was dissolved this past fall because the leaders stated that they believed that the town was ready to take on the mission and the work of supporting mental health in our community. Hoping to see some nods there, is that right? Yeah, maybe. I believe that the stated focus was going to be on prevention and that there may have even been a line item to hire a specialist for that. I'm really concerned that the recent significant proposed cuts to the Board of Education budget run exactly counter to the town's intent to support mental health in our community. Increasing class sizes and reducing the number of adults in front of kids is simply not conducive to prevention, not to mention the current morale around these cuts, both with family members as well as professionals, the school, as professional as they are. Our teachers are really sensitive to the needs of students and their families, and those needs go beyond the classroom. They're equipped to help our youth become lifelong learners and leaders themselves. From the teachers who recognize that quiet kid who's still engaged to the librarian that's also a confidant, to the math teacher that also helps a kid learn test-taking strategies. We all know teachers really do go above and beyond in that way, and I'd like to express some gratitude for them at this moment as well. I'm sure that you all share that sentiment. I know that you probably have had your own experiences with professionals that have been very impactful for you. I'd invite you to take a minute to think about those people that you might still remember that made a positive impression on you and helped you become the person you are today. I really implore the council to remember its mission to support mental health with all of your future actions. If there's any possibility to go back and revisit the recent cuts that have been proposed before they get all the way to us voters, I think that you are finding this evening, there are many people who would really love the opportunity to vote on a budget that fully supports the students, the teachers, the schools, and ultimately, the entire town. I don't need to restate what you already know about the importance of having a strong school system within a strong community. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your service. Excuse me.
So we'll go back to the room. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Dennis Deegan, 689 Talon State Road. Keeping, I guess, on the budget subject, having been here the other night, a couple of things come to mind. First and foremost, I guess, is if, in fact, the council and certain members of the council think that their wisdom on cutting the education budget by, I understand, a million dollars over the whole process, one would think that you would articulate exactly where you think those funds should come from. It's one thing to sit up there and basically throw numbers out and sit back in your chair and take your glasses and twirl them and act however you want to act, but the reality is that it's not a business, it's a town, okay? Which means that you're just not necessarily cutting some people out of buying your product or your service. You're basically hurting real people in the town where you're supposed to live or do live, okay? So I think you really have to look at things a little differently. So hopefully, now that I've learned even though, oh, is everyone here tonight? Is Mr. Noonan online? Okay, because I didn't hear roll call, who was here and who wasn't here, but. So I think it's important, under the Section 14 of this meeting, which Mr. Noonan showed me a couple of meetings back, that you guys can actually answer questions. So I guess for anyone listening or here, if you want to hear an answer to something, you should ask for any council member to respond to that under Number 14, because that's the only place that they can answer it. Final comment, quite honestly, from my perspective, the only individual who really deserves to be up there based on the last budget meeting would be Councilman Moran, because quite honestly, he was the only one that showed any kind of thoughtful solution-solving to the problem. And quite honestly, being chastised for not just agreeing to a commitment to something because you're asking someone to give up their principles, quite honestly, would be one reason why I would not vote for someone, not vote for them. So candidly, I think a town to run successfully and well needs people of principle, people that know what goes on in the school, that have kids there, that maybe have actually been in the school, have been a part of what goes on there. So you know what happens. But if there's a million dollars of fat, or a million dollars of waste, or whatever it is, I think, quite honestly, you folks, you should be telling everyone in town why you think that way. And certainly, I'm finishing. From my perspective, I would expect that the noes will be greater in this second vote than ever before, unless you can articulate where you think all that money should come from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go now to John's iPad. We could unmute that.
Kate, thank you. Thank you, Council, for hearing me. I understand the budget is the main priority, rightfully so.
Could you start by giving us, I'm sorry, could you start by giving us your name and address?
John Hughes, 95 Talon Green.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for hearing me. Like I say, I understand the budget, rightfully so, is an important concern tonight. I just wanted to thank the Council for considering my application for the HDC, and good luck with your budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the room would like to speak?
Bettina Harler, 32 Bacchus Road. I'm going to keep it brief. A lot of people before me have already spoken to the budget and echoed their sentiments. The last vote by the Town Council to cut close to $650,000 from just the Board of Education budget felt, to me, spiteful. I would like the Town Council to consider that if the budget fails again, possibly by a larger margin, that people would like for you to restore public education funding and restore some of the Board of Education funding. Our household certainly has voted yes begrudgingly the last time, but likely won't be able to vote yes again. The Town Manager and Financial Advisor have expressed a certain comfort level with utilizing unassigned funds, and I would like the Town Council to consider going that route instead of taking away from the many families who have kids in this town and who came here for the education in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Costa? Liz?
Sorry about that. Liz Costa, 54, Josiah Lane. I urge you to reconsider the proposed budget cuts affecting the essential parts of our community. Since 2017, we have successfully built a significant savings account, particularly with the addition of a tax stability fund in 2019 by use of the ECS additional funding that was meant for education and other unassigned fund balances. Each year, these funds, which originate from our own taxes, have grown consistently and significantly. If the current referendum fails, which I personally hope it does, I encourage you to seek feedback from residents to understand the reasons for voting no. My vote against a referendum is driven by the belief that the proposed cuts do not adequately support our entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We need a few of those that, thank you so much.
Rebecca Risley, 103 Mountain Spring Road. Listen, I was going to just read the email that I sent in because frankly, I think maybe only a couple of you read it. But really, as I'm sitting there looking at the makeup of this board, I'm saying, one, two, three. Three members of this current Town Council have served on our Board of Education. And frankly, I find it disconcerting, upsetting, staggering that all of you, the three of you in particular, don't acknowledge or see what these cuts will do to our school system. So based on my email that I sent in, there are other reasons people will vote no this budget. I'm not going to talk about why education and maintaining a strong school system is important for Talon. I think all of you know that that's an important thing, but you don't recognize what it takes to get there. You're not willing to support what it takes to get there. There are other reasons, other than a budget being too high, that people will vote no. And frankly, I will speak to the literal elephant in the room about the $645,000 cut, which frankly, it's evident, it's spiteful, it directly correlates to use of. And all I have tonight to give is my disappointing.
Thank you. Heather M., online.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Heather McCann, 62 Creston Drive. This will be quick. It's pretty much going to reflect a lot of the sentiment that's already been shared, but just wanted to say that our community is in quite a mental turmoil because many folks have expressed that they cannot support the proposed school budget with a yes vote because they know it's not enough, but are torn because a no vote most certainly will further decimate our school district based on observed commentary and history. From an obvious political point of view, the Republican counselors must know this is such a great position for them to be in because they just keep wanting to cut and cut, especially from the school districts. I just wanted on record that many, many folks have expressed that a no vote is not in support of further cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room want to speak?
So Town Council members and fellow residents, my name is Nai Shan Huang. I'm a resident of 15 Mountain Drive. So I was born in this country. I came here for education and for, I'm really happy with my decision. I understand this gave me a better job, a better life, and better future. So education opportunities is what make this country very strong and competitive. And I believe this vote will make our town very strong, competitive, to attract more residents and businesses. So already, many parents already says I'm going to just speak to the last part of my writing. As I understand it, so the education budget has not been properly funded for the past decade. So the data shows over 11 years, there's an average increase of 1.7%. So it does not even keep pace with inflation. So as I say, education provides more opportunities, but opportunities at school provide better education. And there are the opportunities for our students, for their future. So it isn't just about a single year budget cut. It's about long-term plan, and the long-term damage has occurred and will likely continue to occur in the future for our children and for our town. So please consider to revise the budget. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online want to speak? You can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. We'll come back. Anyone else in the room? Looks like we have online BullPixel7. Yeah, could you please start with your name and address?
Hi, this is Sarah Farrell. My address is 112 Sugar Hill Road. I'm just speaking as a parent. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous. I'm not a public speaker, but I'm just speaking as a parent. I have two kids at middle school. The cuts were already devastating prior to this recent push. So thinking ahead to my kids going into high school, I'm worried that they're not going to have, they're not going to be adequately prepared for whatever comes next. So please, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the process to know if you can change the budget at this point. As it stands, I could not in good favor vote for this to pass, and it's because of the severe cuts to education. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Hi, I'm Erin Rusley, 103 Mountain Spring Road. This is going to be short. I'm also not used to speaking in front of a bunch of people, but I'm a freshman in Talon School, Talon High. And I'm nervous about what's going to happen as I go through sophomore, junior, senior year. And I know a lot of, some board members don't think the students know what's going on with the budget. Well, we do know. Some of us do know. And we are nervous about what's going to happen to us in the coming years. I have French teacher, one of my best, one of my best French teachers, one of my favorite teachers, who's getting cut. He's a native French speaker, and he brings a lot to the school, into the French program. And just keep in mind, just keep the students in mind when you're going over what you go over, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else online who wishes to speak? Then raise yours in hand or press star nine. Else in the room?
Hi, Gerdr Goldsmith, twenty-one Rockville Lane. I watched the town manager propose last week additional cuts of fifty thousand dollars, all to education, and that was alarming to me. Considering all the many ways the entire town should have needed to share in those cuts, in my opinion. However, it's horrifying to watch a council member propose six hundred and forty-five thousand in cuts, all to our schools. And then it was reckless and irresponsible for this proposal to be agreed to by three additional members. None of the four individual council members who supported this cut even bothered to negotiate for something that would be less catastrophic. There was not one voice from those four, even attempting to find unity or map. Don't make the mistake of concluding the parents in our town aren't voting, just don't care, or that they're not gonna notice. They elected you and they trust you. Please add funds back in before we vote on this radically crippling budget. Our schools can't withstand this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Bethany, Bethany Lesko.
Hi, Bethany Lesko, twenty-six Deer Meadow. I wasn't going to speak, but then the student that just spoke a couple, two people before, I commend you for standing up and speaking on behalf of your fellow students. And which made me want to tell you, the board, the town council, that my thirteen-year-old, my seventh grader came home today and said that one of her favorite teachers at the middle school is packing up their whole classroom because they don't know if they have a job next year. And they won't know until after the school year, so they will be packing themselves up. To hear her disappointment and to hear her sadness that this is happening in a town that she loves to go to school in, I said, "Do you want to write a letter to the town council, to the Board of Ed? You can speak." And she, you know what she said? And I hope this resonates because, and I'm thankful that the other student just stood up because no one seems to be listening to the parents. No one is reading emails or responding with a genuine heart. It's just cut, cut, cut. So, my daughter said, "What do they care? They don't care. They're not gonna help. They're not gonna find money. They're not gonna support us." So, that's coming from the words of a thirteen-year-old who doesn't know any of you, but sees you and sees your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Hello, Caroline Hargreaves, twenty-eight Charlemagne Street. There's a quote that I've been drawn to throughout my entire life, which is, "I still say that some of the biggest criminals are those that turn their heads away when they see wrong and know it's wrong." And here I am. There's been a discussion among community members about how to voice our outrage, about how catastrophic cutting an additional six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars would be on the school system. It's so incredibly irresponsible to do so. Community members think that some of you actually care about how the daily lives of our students will be negatively impacted. They wonder if voting no sends a message that we don't agree with this budget and with the obscene cuts that we just made as the town council. But what must be remembered and considered is that the town council made these cuts. Some of you with smiles on your faces. I am a realist and I understand that there are four of you who do not care about our students, our staff, and the reputation of Tallinn Public Schools. You would happily absorb my no vote to use against the BOE for additional cuts if we have a worth-filled referendum. So, I ask you, our town council, what does matter to you? Ethics complaints, lawyer requests, demanding a forensic audit of all of our town finances? Should we send a recording of the council meeting in which it was stated that the town manager purposely gave a directive to withhold financial information from council members unless they specifically asked for it? Should that get the notice of the state and of the town of Tallinn? This is a call of action that this outraged community needs to make. In addition to stopping the bleed by passing the budget, I have never, ever seen a town council put money back into a budget after they made cuts. Shame on all of you that participated in that vote and have absolutely decimated our school system. Shame on you.
Thank you. Nina, online?
Hi, Gina Dewey, four forty-five Old Post Road. We moved to Tallinn in 2019 because of the school system. It was drawn to us and seeing my girls thrive. I have a six-year-old, now seven, in first grade at Birch Grove, and a ten-year-old going into middle school. Hearing and seeing my friends that I have made in the school system, teachers packing up their classrooms, there was cars at Birch Grove, seeing their items packed up. The sadness on their faces really reached out to me. I, as a parent, take pride in being in Tallinn and getting the, my girls getting the education that they need. The report that they build with these teachers, the sadness that is carrying on in these schools and these students knowing that there are changes coming is affecting them. My oldest is in intervention programs and is in need of co-teaching. Watching her thrive under the co-teaching and what she's getting amazes me. I fear with her going into middle school, the lack of support, she will fall through these cracks. And I know parents pull their kids out and go to these private schools because of the changes in Tallinn recently. I'm paying Tallinn taxes. I wanna see my children take advantage of the education Tallinn receives and not be that parent that has to make the decision to pull them out for a better education. So, please reconsider the cuts that you are making to the Board of Education and our teachers in consideration of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening. I'm Mary Rose DeBarry. Little disclaimer, I'm not a financial expert nor a statistician. But if a fifty-seven or fifty-four thousand dollar reduction in a budget can, can close a gap, a voting gap by twenty-six votes, I'm not sure how you deduce that you need to now reduce, reduce a budget by six hundred and forty-five thousand. Doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm sure it doesn't make a lot of sense to anyone else. It also does not help when there are council members doing council business on social media that are actively sabotaging budgets. It does not help anyone. Our community is fighting with each other over this, over our budget. God stop. It's sad. We live in a beautiful community and we all want the same thing. But that does not make any sense to go for that large of a reduction when we were so darn close. And I know there was another proposal on the table that no one, that people refused to listen. Thank you very much.
Online, we have Darren.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your service on the town council. I appreciate it. Darren Bishop, fourteen Mountainside. I just wanted to say that true humility and an open mind can lead us to faith. And every town council meeting is an assurance from your higher power, whoever that may be, that can, that ultimately restore us to sanity, and I'm hoping that we can all get restored to sanity and sort of stop the infighting. I think everybody has made tremendous points. And I just wanna reiterate that a vote against the upcoming referendum is not an endorsement for further cuts to the budget for the BOE. We need to put our children first. That's what drives folks to a community. Find other sources of revenue that can help support us in other ways. But these cuts, they're a no vote for a lot of folks. And I appreciate everybody's time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Last chance.
Hi, Emily Bishop, fourteen Mountainside. Actually, just heard from my husband. I just wanted to read the email that I wrote from the last referendum that failed that I only heard from, thank you, Councilman Moran for responding, but I'll read it. I implore, dear Tallinn Town Council, I implore you to not make additional cuts to our education services. Seven years ago, my husband and I bought a plot of land and built our dream home in this lovely town. We chose Tallinn to raise our two boys mainly because of the school system. Since then, our boys have had successful school years and have flourished into their teenage years. Our oldest will be headed to Tallinn High School next year. The last thing he deserves is to have a subpar high school experience because of continued budget cuts to his education. Education should be a priority, not the first on the chopping block. A town with a successful school system is a town that attracts people and strengthens a community. I have personally had the privilege of working alongside many of the staff in several of the schools and can attest firsthand to their timeless efforts and dedication to our children. If you continue to take funds away to support this critical system, we will continue to see a decline in our educational reputation and ultimately a decline in population as many will choose to raise their children elsewhere. I believe that those who voted no to both budgets are elected to support a tax increase but would not agree to additional cuts at our schools. I understand the difficult position you are in, but strongly request that you exhaust all options before making additional cuts to our schools. I appreciate you volunteering to better our community. I voted for many of you or all of you, I can't remember at this point, but I, I put my faith and trust in you to make good decisions for our town and for my children. But I am so disheartened by the massive budget cut as many others have, have also shared. I don't understand it personally. I just, I wanna, I wanna understand why, because I didn't get that when I listened to the meeting from last week. Why? Why so much from the Board of Education? Why such a high amount? It feels like after listening that it is a spiteful retaliation from something that a lot of us don't even understand because it's just never really direct and clear. But I can't vote yes to this. I can't. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Elizabeth, and I can't see your last name, S. Oh, sorry. That was our bad. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Shifano. I live at one forty-two High Ridge Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will keep this short as many have already shared similar sentiments as mine. I am a parent and an educator at the college level. I'm undergraduate program director in a STEM field, and I advise between seventy-five and a hundred undergraduate students each year. The positive correlation between high school academic opportunities and college success is amazingly strong and cannot be ignored. Further depriving our students of educational opportunities with these budget cuts will further put our students at an extreme disadvantage in college, both in terms of admission and in course trajectory, as well as in their job prospects post-graduation. I do not support the budget cuts to our educational system, and I hope that you reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room would like to speak? Anyone else online? In the room? Online? Alright, seeing no further participants in public participation, we will move on to item number six, which is public hearing items, of which we have none. And then next is item seven A, which is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Councilperson Ari, would you like to talk about firehouse or ARPA?
No, I think you have to update that Megan sent us or we want.
You actually were on science.
Yeah, I did. So, went, I went last week and Megan, and he called up the other day. We have a few more things to be working on. Hopefully by the end of this month, I'm hoping to get a CO to at least separate the trucks back into the fire station. There was, I believe it was, sink that didn't qualify for ADA, so they gotta look back into that and get a new one, but that shouldn't any further so, everybody moving in there. So, but next week, we will be meeting. I don't know what's gonna be on the agenda, but very, very quick. Waiting for a few years. Brian, have you heard anything more from Megan that's?
See, the kitchen cabinets were entirely not ADA. And we were not gonna compromise on that, so at no cost to the town, the kitchen, what we made ADA accessible, many of the punch items that left on the list should not prevent the firehouse and trucks from being there and servicing that end of town from that location, which is most important. The fire department doors, the garage doors I put in were slightly incorrect. I mean, that, that will not stop us from getting the trucks and apparatus in there. The kitchen, again, they're gonna have to replace the cabinets at some point. It is a full ripout. Again, that will not stop the trucks from being in there. So, as soon as we can get a conditional CO, we can move trucks in there and then arrange to have the punch list items at the end fixed.
That's it. And ARPA hasn't met. We don't really have anything. Not a huge gap. So, once Brian gets more, more, right? Yeah, I thought it was gonna what, a few years now.
Thank you. Brian, have we heard any update about the district, about the final Birch Grove payment?
Uh, not that I have prepared here.
Okay. So, that is still on hold until we get our final payment from the state?
Everything was signed off, believe, and we're just waiting to get it.
Next is item seven B, which is reports of town council liaisons.
EUC meeting was canceled, so I don't have this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson, you to check?
Yeah, so, thank you. So, last night, Tallinn Fire Department, Tallinn Fire Department. So, a lot of good things that happened in there. Crandall Park, they are actually gonna be finally putting back the dock on June twelfth, and I know Brian is very excited about that, so cooperation with the fire department, our public works at the fire department, they're gonna be working on that, so that will be great. And then some electrical work is gonna be completed, said today, so that must mean yesterday, put the foundation, fountain, put in the Crandall Park on there, so it helps eery the water, so it's River Park at Birch Grove, they're work, trying to find somebody to do fence in the dodo roots. We've been working really hard trying to find somebody to help and preschool graduation for the four-year-old happened a few weeks ago. Town manager attended, and that was a great start for their future kindergarten summer stuff. Summer staff training will begin on June seventeen. Then the camp is built up, so that's really great. I think that's it for that. So, there's a lot going on in the
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moran?
Yeah, the planning and zoning commission met last night. Fortunately, I was not able to attend. But one thing I did want to mention, because in our last meeting, I'd like to mention, there was a land acquisition advisory committee meeting a few weeks ago now, and it's gonna come up under new business, under eight point one, the potential acquisition of certain property, so we can talk about that, but we're gonna have to mention that.
Um, so, PCC, excuse me, was canceled.
So PCC, excuse me, was canceled tonight. But their next and last meeting of the year is on June 20th, and they have an upcoming event at the Rec Center for Family Big Day. And that's changed.
Sure, the Agriculture Commission met on Monday. Just basically discussed that the farmers market is up and running. They're getting ready to do their turn-ups. They need to come up with a new logo, logo that currently has all materials still being used by the market. They can move down the street, no copy logos. You can start running. Still looking for a student liaison. And there's more work to be done. Be to get more DGLs on the website, more links to the.
The Historic District Commission meets later this month. I'll tell that. Frog met in person last week during the day, and I was not able to attend. And I know the Health District is having strategic planning happening. They're working on getting that skinny.
They are on the part.
Thank you. Any questions about any of those items? So we will move on to new business, starting with item 8.1, 257 Toly Road Property Acquisition.
Thank you, Chair. About 56 acres down the Endatory Road towards Gary, that area down there, right next to the loose conservation area. Again, about 56 acres of property owned by Bruce Botner. He was gracious enough to reach out to the town and ask us if we wanted to buy it before he puts it on the market. It's been discussed by the Conservation Commission and then again by the Land Acquisition Committee. Mixed feelings on spending some of the money that we have in our land acquisition fund, which is about 472,000. Mixed feelings about spending it on that land there when it's likely developable. That being said, if we can apply for a grant and get it on the cheap, then it was, it certainly make it somewhat more debatable whether or not we should get it or not and discuss it. So we're going to talk about, Mr. Cochran, my planner is here and he's going to talk about it, but it's essentially $8,000 out of the land acquisition fund to get an appraisal of this property so that we can apply for a grant and hopefully get the grant, then we still, we're not going to commit it to nothing. But at least to look at it, maybe get, we got great chunk of land, very, very developed, it's also great, it would be great for trails and recreation, that sort of thing for the town there. But David, you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to add Jane Semenow, she's our Conservation Commission Chair now, and is also happy to answer any questions. The, yeah, the idea here would be in order to get any grant from any funding agency, we will need an appraisal and appraisal review. It'll actually be done to a federal standard. There's not so many of us left. So conservatively, it may cost up to around $8,000 to get that done. If this is something the town council wants to do, we can, we can get that and then as the deep open space and watershed acquisition program or other grant funding opportunities come available, we can submit that application. If we move through the OSPO program, they would potentially fund up to 65% of the application of the, of the purchase price. So if our assessor estimate at 435 were to be somewhere in the ballpark of what that property is worth, then, you know, we would estimate that we'd be on the hook for a little less than $200,000. So, but that happy to answer any.
Councilman Moran?
I just want to mention a couple of things, one of which I mentioned in the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee. The other one is just to be clear, the funds that we're seeking, both, or that, you know, this before council is both, for both with the appraisal and potentially for the purchase, comes from a separate fund that's dedicated specifically to land acquisition. So it's not, has no impact on the budget or any of that, anything of that nature. The other thing that I mentioned in the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee meeting is that obviously I haven't, you know, made up my decision about whether we should all pay purchase or not. I have reservations, you know, about taking developable land that could, you know, potentially add to our tax base and and just sort of not allowing that to be developed, but that's what I understand. The importance of, you know, conservation and having an open space. So I admit my mind, but certainly that is something that I might allow.
To reaffirm that, that the Land Acquisition Committee would make a recommendation. And that he gets to make it twice, once that land acquisition team send it to council, then council again. That's also, you would ultimately all have the ultimate decision on whether or not to purchase or not a sudden land acquisition. We would just make a recommendation.
Any other questions, Gunnar?
Yeah, so we do go through this, we get a grant. I mean, do we have another opportunity at that point to advise?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, we, we're not committing to anything here, other than the $8,000. My understanding.
And then move forward to apply for the grant, and there's no commitment at all. The state can tell us, you know, go council or not give me anything, it's like, we'll give you a bunch of money. You know, we'll make that assessment then. But this is, we all felt fairly decent gamble to get possibly get some really decent property at a low price, which is what our Land Acquisition and Conservation Commission is geared to. But again, that would only be recommendations to you, and you make the ultimate decision.
Yeah, I was just looking at the map here. It's kind of, kind of middle is it, you have thoughts?
Another, it's loose. Yes, there's great, there's a great access point. Is that right at Torrey Road, I believe, David, in the end of it?
Yeah, so if you look at your map, it's actually both, there's two parcels. One is the one highlighted in blue and one is on the southeast corner. It's highlighted in yellow there. So, and then the loose conservation area, property to the north, the harder roof run or south roof. So, so, you know, you install the access from loose to the end of Susan Drive, and then potentially another access out of Torrey Road.
And I'm just one additional question. So it's coming out of the Land Acquisition Advisory Committee. How was that funded?
Was it one time?
So it was approved by referendum sometime in the 2000, 2005, 2006.
So it was just money that the town decided to put aside.
Yeah.
I imagine they're on board with spending $8,000, obviously. This discussion.
We've made that recommendation to bring it forward, and that's where we are today, yes.
Okay. So what questions I have?
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, just to confirm, this is only developable as residential property. You cannot in any way make this commercial.
No. Not as owned now. You can change things in theory, but not now.
Any other questions? I had a question. In the conversations with the property owner, this process, which I assume will take a little bit of time, is agreeable to them? They're still kind of holding?
Yeah. We've also explained, you know, the appraisal process, the grant process. Isn't exactly a speedy thing that they're being great.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Dave?
Yeah, that's accurate. They would really prefer to, they want, this was their grandparent's property. They would love to see the Butler Conservation Area. That's their priority. But, yeah, so as long as we're in St. George's, the goal line, they're more than happy to.
And just to reiterate, this was that $8,000, up to $8,000 was approved by the Land Acquisition Advisory Council, sorry, I brought that name wrong. And the Conservation Commission is also on board with the potential of incorporating this land into their portfolio?
I would, Jane, you have to keep us safe.
Yes, very much so. We had a, we did a site walk of the property, and it's a beautiful piece of property that would be a wonderful addition to our conservation area.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are my questions. Any further questions?
So Brian, I think you might need a motion then from us. So it's not in our packet, but I think the motion would be to approve spending up to $8,000 for appraisal and appraisal review out of the existing land acquisition fund and applying for funding from the deep open space and watershed acquisition program or other grant funding opportunities as they become available. Is that what you would need?
Yes, Chair.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Moran. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Ari. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item 8.2, consideration and action on the suspense tax list for June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Chair. This is something we do every year. Obviously, our tax department does a really good job of collecting taxes. I believe in the 98 percentile, 99% or so. That does leave out a group of delinquent tax bills. Those tax bills, we moved to, we want to move them off of our books and transfer them out to a tax collecting service. Is that accurate? Aaron, you want to explain further?
Yes. So we propose to transfer the attached tax accounts to suspense. Each tax account transferred will not thereafter be recognized as an asset of the town, although all remain collectible. The requested actual transfer, 202 accounts in the amount of $139,062.84. The attached pages have 20 personal property accounts and 182 motor vehicle accounts. Attempts to collect the taxes were made through delinquent statements, demands, and alias tax warrants in accordance with state statutes. We received address corrections from the Department of Motor Vehicle and forwarding addresses from the post office and thoroughly searched online. These efforts have been to no avail with regard to the listed accounts. We will continue to pursue collection of these taxes in spite of their suspenseless status. Suspense accounts are turned over to Tax Serve Capital Services LLC for collection at no cost to the town. Tax Serve Capital Services LLC will locate new addresses through skip tracing and send collection letters. We will continue to report delinquent motor vehicle accounts to the Department of Motor Vehicles. This places a hold on registrations or renewals until the taxes are paid. This is especially helpful when taxpayers return to Connecticut after moving out of state and attempt to register their vehicles. And then I also just wanted to add some information. Seeing as how the suspense list is significantly more money than previous years. On the 2019 grant list, there was one account called DFOPCO LLC, which was a dairy. They had one personal property account in the amount of $32,879.40 and 76 motor vehicles totaling $66,502.18. This account alone makes up almost $100,000 of the suspense list. While researching this company, I found on this DT Business site that the business has been revoked. We are unable to find an accurate address for this account and have exhausted all efforts. While we are no longer expecting the town to receive this money, our collection agency, Tax Serve, will continue to look for an accurate address and pursue payment at a cost to the town.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions about this?
Yeah, so, I guess I'm just a little curious about what it means to move it to the suspense list. Does that mean like you're wanting to put in your brand list compilation with time being?
So it basically means the town is no longer expecting this money. We've exhausted all our efforts to collect on these bills. And so we work with Tax Serve Capital LLC, they're a collection agency. They just added 15% fee to the bills that they collect. It's at no cost to the town, and they send us our portion of the money. So it's still collectible, but we just aren't expecting that money as a town asset anymore.
No way, it's just not.
Yeah.
Moving into the map.
It's confusing.
Any other questions?
What efforts do you plan to make prior to sending these bills out to collection?
We do delinquent statements almost on a monthly basis. After two delinquent statements, we send a demand for personal property accounts. We will attach a UCs billing, which we file on the government website. And for motor vehicles, we will report them to the DMV, which puts a hold on their registration. So they're unable to reregister a vehicle, and they're unable to register a new vehicle. When, and then we also serve alias tax warrants, which gives Tim Marshall, the state marshal, I'm sorry, Tim Blasky, our state marshal, the authority to collect on our behalf. He'll attach to bank accounts if he can, and if nothing comes of it, then that's when we decide to put it on suspense, once it's been several years of these attempts.
So that's like a period of time before you even decide to do this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I think there is a resolution in our packet, Agenda Item 8.2, resolved by the Talon Town Council, that it hereby fruits the June 30th, 2024 suspense list in the amount of $139,062.84. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Ari. Is there a second? Councilor Butler, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, suspensions, honestly, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a consideration of a resolution to approve the revised personnel policies and procedures.
Thank you, Chair. So this is something you'd rather do above board than, than maybe, nothing to say we couldn't do it. We just look, rather bring it to council, and it's a change to our personnel policies and procedures that allows me some flexibility in retiring new staff to adjust vacation time as needed. We have some major director spots that we anticipate in the next few years. Talon pays less than most towns for most of these positions, and so we're looking for flexibility there. And also internally with our building to make it consistent with the CSEA labor contract, so that our employees that are not in that union also have the same options that they have in the labor contract that CSEA has. Mike Wilkinson, you can see him on Zoom, is here to answer any questions. Mike, you have anything you want to add to what I just provided?
Yeah, no, just a little more background. Yeah, we already added this to the CSEA contract since before COVID. Things have been very, very competitive as far as hiring people in municipal government. People just aren't going into it as much. So one of the things that we needed to do was look at that vacation and allowing some flexibility to give people vacation based on their prior work experience. That way, if we were going to hire someone that had 20 years of experience and is a good employee somewhere else, that they can come in and Brian could give them that amount of vacation that they're currently getting at another job. We lost a couple of employees that really just weren't comfortable with that, where they'd go from four weeks down to two weeks to start. And so we changed it in the CSEA contract, and then this would change it for the non-unions, as Brian mentioned.
This was done in consultation, obviously with Pat McHale, our labor attorney, who recommended to do this.
Is there any questions, the town manager? We have in our agenda, item 8.3, a draft resolution. The Town Council approves the attached provisions to the town personnel policies and procedures. Councilor Butler, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Ari, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please take a minute to say aye. Oh, staying, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Then Agenda Item 8.4 is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and committees.
Okay, you want to take this?
Sure. So Councilor Shay and I have spent some time.
So Counselor Shay and I have spent some time trying to fill some of the vacancies, in particular on the Historic District Commission and also on the Agricultural Commission. And so we're very appreciative to everyone that, you know, reached out, wanted to volunteer. I can let Joe speak a little bit more about the person we're recommending for the Ag Commission, because I believe Joe met him at an Ag Commission meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Really, really, who's the guy? He's got good, good experience. He armed himself. Came to the first meeting and attended, and that's what he is. So this is an average edition.
You know, we're looking, if I can jump in, we're looking for some volunteers for the farmer's market. Is he that type of person or is this a different type of situation?
Volunteers in regards to help set. Oh, I think he would. I think he would help. Because he can talk about a little bit how to set work. And he has some experience with how other farmers markets are setting their, their markets up. So yeah, I think he would.
All right.
But I'm not, I'm not as a.
I'll reach out first. Two-year commitment. Anyone out there wants to volunteer on our Ag Commission or to help set up the farmer's market, I'd love it too.
And then we also have recommending someone, Tonya Kelly, for the seat on the Historic District Commission, as well as three other individuals to serve as alternates, Tracy Harbert, Joe Hues, and Philip Demand. I think Joe, you know, got that, I think some perspective hopefully will be good for the, for the, for the commission. And we're appreciative of everyone that sort of volunteered to help the town. So I think we both recommend them to the.
One question actually, certainly, if I email. I couldn't look at your response to something about some of the criteria that we, that's needed for the Historic District Commission's forests, not the.
Yeah.
We all just, but like, recognize that.
Recommend to live within the district?
Okay.
So we certainly need that criteria.
Yeah, and that was one that we chose in line. That criteria. Thank you.
Any questions, concerns about these five people?
Say thanks, Joe.
So is there a motion to approve the appointments as listed in our packet and outlined by Council Moran?
So moved.
Council Moran, is there a second? Second by Council Shay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Questions? So we're, we haven't begun. The next item on our agenda is old business. We don't have anything there. Item number ten is the report of the Town Manager.
Okay, thank you Chair. I'm going to run through a lot here. If you stop in during the day here, you'll see that our financial audit has begun, our annual financial audit. The auditors are here. Also, the Girl Scout camp is coming along. It's a lot of work for our, both our fire marshal and our building inspector. I thank them for the work up there. I expect a meeting with the new, there's a new CEO of Girl Scouts of America in Connecticut here. I hope to meet with her at some point. Our, out of Human Services, our youth theater is serving about seventy-five kids, we believe to be. And that's going to get rolling, I believe, on June twenty-fourth. I'm very excited about that. You know, when the play comes along, go check it out. But it's just, behind the scenes, it's just so, it's such an important program for seventy-five of our kids in the summertime to have some outlet there. So I thank Human Services and all the volunteers involved with that. We continue to move forward with a grant that we received for our media center at the library. And that is basically, so there's so many programs that our library does. We want to make them available virtually as well to get more eyes on them. We got, Megan did a good job getting twenty thousand dollars from the state. And as you can imagine, these types of cameras and acoustics and such are costly. We've been close with the Library Foundation as well, in case there's any cost overrun or anything to meet with them, so there's no additional cost to the town. A major donor to the library, the someone responsible for the state is, as the executor has asked that we do a bench out on town property here. It's something that we would entertain, there'd be a cost, and they would pay for that, obviously. We worked with the librarian about that today. Her Dropbox is old. We're looking at that. We even currently have one donated from the, an old US mailbox from the post office. We're likely going to look, my idea was to have it painted by a student or a mural on the box. It's basically a big old massive post office fox. So we'll look to do something with that. The eight hundred, or I'm sorry, Old Post Village in the grant, teaming up with elderly housing management plus the town. We're applying for a two million dollar grant. That grant application has been very heavy. And in order to sometimes to meet state and federal grants, you have to prove that your policies and procedures are in alignment with so many other things loosely even related to these types of things. Megan and Bev have been doing an amazing job, just very, very work-intensive. And period, but my administrative assistants also has been assisting. It's just a heavy lift. But again, it's two million dollars. It's going to cover a lot of ADA improvements, roof, parking, ramps, you know, there's so much around the property. If you ever, you know, this is the one right behind the Jailhouse Museum. I've been to it many times. It could use, it could use a lot of, it could use two million dollars worth of renovations, that for sure. We're looking to have plans solidified to connect the green down to the business area. You know, basically, we can walk by sidewalk all the way to Big Y and beyond. In order to do that, we, the town couldn't, I can't imagine possibly pay for that to actually do that construction themselves. We would apply for a low-sip grant to do that. But in order to apply for a low-sip grant, we already have to have those plans in hand, working with our new engineer and CROG and DOT and others, and our grants manager to start putting those plans together again, along with our new engineer. The bridge on seventy-four, right now, everything seems to be on track. Moving forward, moving to be completed in September. We have not received any bad news from them yet, but now that I said it, I'm sure we'll learn the call tomorrow. But hopefully, that, that bridge is, is open and at least passable by September when school gets going again. As far as emergency management, I've been meeting with Chief Whitel and Director Lappin about, maybe after them this week, about hurricane season coming up and being prepared for that. The long and short of it is that we are only as well-prepared as ever sources. You know, our tree trimming is on track as to where we want, as where we need to be. But again, it's, we're in communication and starting to plan for if and when hurricane dust does start coming our way, we're as sure as we'll be prepared. As mentioned earlier, Crandall's is moving along forward. I thank DBW for all their extra efforts in making it just a beautiful place again. DBW's been working hard, getting their, our summertime paving, and that is on schedule and moving well. As Chair or Councilperson Uticek mentioned, Talon Tykes graduated. Congratulations to those students. I also want to remind everyone that we have that kayak loner program that was successful last year. We sign out a kayak for free and take it out and return it. We got the, we got the kayaks through a grant for free and they're available to our citizens. So anyone that wants to grab one, please, that are our Parks and Rec Department. Our DBW set up five hundred flags around cemeteries for Memorial Day. I thank them for that, piggybacking on what Mark Schmidt's done with the wreaths across America. Again, he put down over five hundred wreaths. DPW helped so much with that, both the planning and logistics and cleanup as well. Our adult softball team, our league is underway at Crandall's. Thanks to our Parks and Rec for that. Summer help in our camps begins training, I believe, next week, so that's going to be moving forward with our separate camps here in town. Our Towns Clerk's office remains very busy. Anyone that's been in town hall the last week or so with the dogs, dog license renewals, and a reminder if anyone has them, get going. Plus, they've been obviously busy with the referendum, both passed and one coming up as well. Some things around town, that New Deli opened up, as I'll call it, the old seven eleven, the same was as Talon Pizza, and go check it out. I went and it was clean, and they have, they have, you know, basically deli-type of stuff, sandwiches and such. Trittown Building is moving forward. Trittown Gymnastics currently in the rear of Shay's Electric down off of Thirty, is building its own standalone building, and you can see there's, they have broken ground and are moving forward up there. Also, quietly, there's been, there's a new medical building going in off of Essex sixty-nine. As you come off, as you're heading eighty-four east, you get off at Essex sixty-nine. On the right, there's an old cave there, there's land there that had been for sale. We're looking to, they're going through the permit process to put a medical building there. So that's, that's good news for the town. I visited River Park today with Director Lappin to inspect our wells and our pump house up there, as we, as we kind of look to move forward with Connecticut Water, Water Commission. Our water, our water infrastructure is aging and failing. And we're looking, again, moving forward to try to sell our water company essentially to Connecticut Water. I want to thank again all the volunteers that have been helping with the farmer's market, and I want to thank the volunteers that have been helping with our referendums. Although, when you go and vote for a referendum, please thank the volunteers that come out and help, as well as Mr. Wyman, Mr. Bach, and the assistant registrars. Certainly, they've been, they've been put to the test here. I'm sure Mr. Wyman wishes he retired last year as opposed to this, but he's got one more big election down the road too. So I might thank them all for that. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Do you have a question, Council Uticek?
Just under the public works. I'm sorry if I missed it, but how's progress with the new facility?
He's on track. The engineering folks have been out. I've met the engineering folks on site. You know, and I know you're going with it on our, on our end of it, you know, you want to make sure we're on that end, but he's the, both that and both Director Lappin and the engineer of insurance that we're on track to, to make sure we spend that, the funds.
So, any other questions?
What's the status of the steep grant for pickleball?
You got it moving along for us at the state. And I don't know exactly where it is, but that gets moving forward with it. Now that we got it, again, it was great help to other towns as well. I know all of ours, obviously, that it was delayed, so I'm happy to have that moving forward, yeah.
Then just, is that, we got a pickleball event? Yeah. Or Harrenco?
I mean, it's Harrenco that was talked about.
Yep.
Sure. So, just said, we got those pickleball courts, the towns receive a signed document from the state approved to fund. That's what was.
That's what I'm talking, yeah. We got it loosened up. Thank you.
What about the MOU statute, the state case?
I am in, every other week or so, touching base with your attorney from desk legal. I am in, in, in having a off-chance conversation with someone in charge of IT over there. I'm not hopeful on getting crime data for our town and beyond any, the very rudimentary data that we receive already. That's just my opinion. Not in a single conversation, but with someone who's, that's where I worked. So it was, it was disheartening, and I hope he was being inaccurate, and then I hope this attorney can work something out, work something out one way or the other.
Yeah, the, when the lieutenant came in, he seemed willing to give us that data. So.
We'll see. Because that's going to require next-gen training. And the person I talked to is involved in next gen, but we'll see.
Thank you. Any other questions, Town Manager? The next item on our agenda is adoption minutes. We are going to just do these one at a time as opposed to in a group. We do have several to go through. And I have notes that I have to not forget. So if you could just bear with me for one minute. The first, the first minutes is to adopt the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So.
By Council Moran, is there a second? Is there any discussion regarding these minutes? Okay. Since I think oh, okay, so all those in favor of approving these minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that was covered. So that's April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Next is the May eighth, twenty twenty-four emergency meeting minutes. And I'm looking for a motion to approve these minutes with an amendment. We did this last time. We said the amendment is on the resolution in the minutes. The draft minutes say list the ballot question as four point seven five percent. But it, that was a typo. It should actually be four point five seven percent. So I'm looking for a motion to approve these minutes with that amendment.
So moved.
By Council Butler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Shay. Is there any further discussion about the May eighth, twenty twenty-four emergency meeting minutes? No, okay. All those in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 So that, that was everyone. Thank you. The next minutes are our May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. And I, I don't have a note on this one, so I think.
Did you say May sixteen?
May sixteen, that's what I have in front of me. So these, I'm looking for a motion to approve these minutes as drafted. There are motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Mari. Is there a second? Moran, is there any discussion regarding these?
I just have one correction.
Sure.
And I will say this is very long, so thank you for stepping into duty, because she did an excellent job. Page seventy-two.
You're looking at the packet for the next.
I think, I think it might be.
Yes. For not seventy-two.
Yeah. But I have no idea.
So you're looking at page seventy-two of our packet to show our meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's go with that.
Okay.
It should be under four point two. If we see that, I'm on the right page.
Okay.
It is fully sworn in, point of order, fully uns sworn in. And then further on the next page, it was, I'm sorry, two pages down, it says fully sworn in again. He's sworn in once. Not uns sworn in. It was just remained sworn in.
Sworn.
Do you want to do it again?
So just to remove the first uns sworn in?
Remove the first uns sworn in, and then on page seventy-four, it says fully sworn in for a second time. That didn't happen. That didn't happen, no.
So we're straightening them.
Striking them.
Both. Striking them.
Yes.
Yes.
So I apologize. This, who, who made the motion for this one? We didn't have a motion yet.
Oh.
We did? You can be the motion Chris made. Thank you very much for giving Jack that. Are you guys okay with the amendment that Counselor Butler just brought up, confirming with Counselor Butler's amendment? Okay, with both the first pens? Okay. Any further questions, comments on these minutes? Okay. All those in favor of approving the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye. You abstaining? So that was, aye, aye, then Counsel Shay abstained. So next, we have the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Council Moran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Butler. Is there any discussion on the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes? No, okay. All those in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by saying aye. Okay, so that's everyone? All right, and lastly, we have the minutes from the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Council Moran, is there a second? Second by Council Uticek. Is there any discussion regarding these minutes? No, okay. All those in favor of approving these minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
So Counsel Butler abstains.
I abstain, same reason.
Counsel Mari abstains, but we do have four yeses on that, so this. Counselor uh Mari abstains, but we do have four yeses on it, so this one can go. Okay. Thank you very much for letting us do that deliberately, since I don't speak before we go. Alright. Last minute. Uh, the next item on our agenda is force buttons to council. Counselor Yudichal?
Um, sure, so a lot of emails to bear with me as well. So I broke them up, I spent my entire weekend going through all of them. We're all checking every name in the, this is perfect. So anyways. So, we got. Two, uh, this, I'm sorry, I should start emails. That's the last council meeting back in. May twenty eighth. We got two, we got uh to form the chair, one regarding social media policy, another one to our ability and uh concern about Robert. Will not be involved, concerns of budget and behavior, budget concerns, chair behavior, revisit rules and procedures. Um, regarding social media posts, concerns, budget issue, um, create a diversity, equity, inclusion, um. Pretty. Um, last one was regarding personal legal matters, regarded a email. See, so then we're gonna move down. Yeah, looking at this one, this was set the. I'm sorry, after the third field referendum. June four. Those, I got a total of fifty two emails, I think, as of like five. So twelve supported asking for more funding, five asking for decrease, one implementation of um generic, generic referendum ballots. Two regarding use of and chair, one regarding use of only, one increase, ask for increase of use of tax stabilization fund. One regarding social media and budget concerns, three concerns and comments, general comments, one asking to come listen to the resident. One ask for reopen charter and discuss budget concerns. Eight disappointed, disappointed with town council, new budget for referendum four, seven voted no for a higher increase. Five voted for no for a lowered increase, one comments about the polling place. One um regarding a town e blast the morning and noticed a referendum four, um. It also wants to know, wants people to know what happens if, happens if it's a field with budget. Uh, one writer would. Would like to know how we um. One would like to know how we voted and how we work in our Biden Carson trip way. And, and then we got Beta One supports the two fifty seventh Tory Road, which we voted on tonight. And lastly, um. And another one came from would like Florida to reevaluate when, when we are making reductions instead of. So, this is where my homework came in. So from January to now, we've received three hundred and twenty eight email. Um. Minus eighteen emails that were not actual real people into three hundred and ten. Of those general support, yeah, I broke them down to basic category, general support, a hundred and eighty nine, not supported sixty three. Six voted no for decrease, uh, nine, again, upset with town council, probably six meetings. They mentioned the eighteen big emails and forty two general um comments and. And I even want to step further, it came, we had a hundred with. Um, a hundred and fourteen, a hundred, three emails and duplicate writers, we had a hundred and thirty two. And when I subtract that, that was a hundred and ninety six total. Yeah. So, yes, so I am very appreciative of everybody that's wrote in, taking the time. And I'm usually really good at writing back and just honestly, Chris did it. Just when I talk about it, we should, you know, I tried, but it was just so many coming in, plus that's just the budget. Um, so I'm sure we have closer to four hundred, but I went back to after group. And so, yeah, so I figured everybody would probably want to have an idea. What's your opinion? Yeah. Yes, so if I missed anything, Katie, John, anybody here, please let me. I, I really, really tried to do my best.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, thank you, you're welcome.
Next item thirteen is the Chairperson's Report. Uh, so I wanted to start by uh thanking council members and the town manager uh for attending tonight's executive session. Um. I uh. After meeting with the town manager, I did request that he facilitate a conversation with the council uh so that we could. Move forward. In a way that met our. Responsibilities to the town. And so uh, thank you to Town Manager Foley for. Reading to facilitate that and for doing so this evening. I think that council members. For attending and for what I thought was a very productive presentation. I wanted to take this opportunity. Um, to speak about uh Pride Month. It was. Uh. With a lot of honor that I was able to read tonight's proclamation, uh, which has been um made by. Uh, town chair before me uh for a number of years now. I believe we just, we use the same one year after year. Um, and I. As a member of uh someone who identifies as part of the LGBTQ plus community, um, having a rainbow household. Um, Eve Burns of Pride Month is something that I, I end up speaking to people about every year. In June inevitably, and also other times throughout the year. And so I wanted to just uh share that a little bit. Um. In a lot of ways, uh, we live in, we do, we do live in a wonderful community. But no community is perfect. There's always a room uh for identifying um. Areas where we can do better and. One of those. Is uh in. Supporting. Our LGBTQ plus neighbors and friends and especially our children. Um, as a young person growing up. It was. My joy to be part of a family that was open and accepting of me, of my uh. Clear uh family members, of um my siblings and. I realized. In high school that my experience was uh very unique in that. Most of my uh friends didn't have that same type of open acceptance. And I have met and unfortunately lost friends. Uh, who have died by suicide uh due to. Internal struggles. With their uh identities and how that's been accepted. As a parent. Of children who. Um. Are not always what others might consider normal. Um, I have a lot of pride in them finding themselves. And it's terrifying to think that. They could consider self harm because they don't feel accepted and supported. Uh, and I. I know a lot of families that have experienced this terror. And it's very important to me. To be vocal about. How we can support each other as a community, how we can support our kids, our friends, our neighbors. Um, and one of the ways of doing that is simply by acknowledging that June is recognized nationally. Uh, by our state and by our town is Pride Month. Um, just the, the rainbows are fun. Um, but they also mean a lot to a lot of people. Um, and they signify that. Maybe I don't understand. Maybe it's not for me, but I still accept you as a valid person and that, that's really important. So I. I wanted to take a minute to. Share that with everyone, um, to share my pride and honor in being able to read uh. Month proclamation this month, uh, to wish everyone a happy pride, uh, to encourage people to go to some of the pride celebrations. That are happening uh throughout the states, uh, in, in neighboring states and communities. Uh, there's a lot of fun to be had. Um. All throughout our state and in, in the area for celebration of pride because for a lot of people, this is a huge celebration. So I encourage uh those who might be interested to attend one of those events. Uh, maybe I'll see you there and thank you very much for. Allowing me and giving me the honor of being able to read the Pride Proclamation. Um, finally, I would just remind everyone that uh next Tuesday, there is a budget referendum. Uh, if you, if you don't know the deal by now, I'm happy to tell you that uh everyone votes at the library from six AM until eight PM. The polls are open. Um, and the uh, there are signs up, there are going to be signs up, I hope, again throughout town. Uh, absentee ballots you can pick up directly from the town clerk's office if you need to. That is it for me. Uh, we will move on to communications and petitions from council first. Anybody like to speak on?
Just two quick points. Um, first, I just wanted to, DBW came up several times, the town manager's report, I just want to. Thank them for all they do. I know, you know. They don't have, you know, as much staff as they, as they might wish, and so we just appreciate everything that they do to step in uh to help the town up with that. And the other that uh the town manager mentioned is the New Delhi that opened up. It's over by Tom Family Pizza. I've been driving by it, so I. Encourage anyone to go check it out and support a local business.
Anyone else?
Council Yudichal. Thank you for all coming. Sorry, there's so many people here disappointed. I'm going on. Eight year, you know, you know, at the first day, I should back up. Katie mentioned it, we met before. We'll please, we'll private, we will build upon and go on. Further, shows community that down the years, they have to. Do better and work together. Uh. So I was going to say, I'm going on my eighth year. And my thing I always ran off was by artisanship and. Since we've been elected, I haven't really felt that and I think it got actually heated throughout. You know, the budget season. Real, 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 uh. I did ask at the last, for that last meeting, I did ask. Are you willing to come? So I did. Uh, so. And I think I just, I really hope that we can work together. Now, another writer, Pearl. Um, two saying that we. Got to get this budget passed and we really need to work together because we have second budget to do next year. We can't end up with being on that. And Katie mentioned, our problems Tuesday, get everybody up to vote, how are we going to vote and. That's a decision, right? So. That's all I want. And again, I apologize if I haven't made an email either. So. Hopefully it did. Many people just, everybody's, is. Recognizing that there's been so many. So I have to say. Thank you.
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna quick count. I don't, you know, budget because we've had. Painful hours, painful, very painful hours. I understand a lot of people said, oh. You know, not, not money. One thing I want to mention a couple of times is that that's for me, the addictive standpoint, which is clearly. Not the case. Um, and, and we had talked about. Before we mentioned them and not once would be, like, talk about the use of money being the issue here at all. Uh, and it didn't even dawn on me that I think that, stop this machine. Um, and I said, no, I. Didn't even put two together that someone might think that, no, because it's nothing we ever talked. Um, it just, I mean, it happens to be that after someone pointed out that that number is very similar to. That's made. Um, and, and, yeah, and we could sit here for hours talking about why we did these cuts. I don't think it's going to make, it's, it's not going to. Please, a lot of people, um, short of saying, we'll give you all the money back if I ask for it. Um, but we don't work under addicted. Mental. On tiers, just to, to, to best. It's nothing cheap we're done. They, they were incredibly. We knew. Making those decisions that we're not going to lose our money. Or the third people. Decision that happened.
Thank you. Sure, I am. Um. So I just, I just wanted to address, thank you for everybody who came out tonight, especially in person, because we don't really ever fill this room. And so it was nice to actually see people here. Um. Even though we get an overwhelming number of emails and we, I think for the most part, uh, read the emails. Um. It's, it's very different when we see faces. Um, and again, we have a lot of people online as well, but. When you see faces in a room, it, it makes a difference. Um, you can't really, you can't really deny the fact that you're an individual and that you're a member of the community and. Um, so I want to say thank you for those of you who actually came out and um told town council how you felt. Um. You know, we're. Seven members here, um. And, you know, unfortunately, it only takes so many votes. To get to a certain point, um. For a budget, you know, I, I, I. Stated time and time again that I've been concerned. That we get to this point where. We'd be flipping yes votes to no votes. Um. You know, I, I've been. Time and time again pushing for us to pass this because, you know, may, maybe some people think we'd love to be here. Um, but, but this process is difficult and it costs the town money to continue doing this over and over and over again and to see that we failed. By twenty six votes last time, it, it, it really, um. It was a blow. And I think, you know, maybe had we had. Gosh, maybe a little bit more support, a little bit more voter turnout, we could have maybe have gotten a yes before. Um, but, you know, as I said before, and I, and I heard a lot of people saying tonight. That they were going to start voting no as opposed to voting yes, it can start. Because we need to get to a place where we, we finally passed this budget. Um, so again, I want to say thank you for those who came out, um, who made their position and voices heard. Um. You know, I'm only one person and I have my own opinions, but um, everybody in this town has a right to come here and let us know how you feel and. Um, I know it takes a lot because not everybody loves to. Speak publicly. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to those who came out and uh share their opinion and to know that, that we all heard you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, the la, uh, number, item number fourteen on our agenda. I'm sorry, item number fifteen are on our agenda is public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit. As we did uh earlier, we will alternate between those who are here in person and those who are here virtually. Um. We'll start in person. Is there anyone who'd like to start?
Yeah, Moran, Kimaralaway, again. Um, I just wanted to reference um Mr. Foley's town manager report and um how he talked about the heavy lift in. The grant process, we have this two million dollars. Um. Anyway, I'd like to also acknowledge Epic Force Lieutenant, who also. Um, on an annual basis. Grants. For this community. School system. Um. Our teachers and administrators who also write grants and whether it's Booster Club, Tep To, Tep. Um, or other entities, they're also making significant efforts. In trying to get. Um. And we'll comment one more time. Going from the town manager's recommended fifty thousand dollar cut to six forty five thousand.
Going from the town manager's recommended fifty thousand dollar cut to six forty-five thousand is a joke. With no reasoning behind it. So, I call yes.
Online, we have Liz Costa.
Thank you, Liz Costa, fifty-four, Josiah Lane. I'm here to advocate for the implementation of a generic referendum ballot in our town's budget re- referendum process. This change is essential, not only for the significant cost savings, but also for the increasing voters' participation, which has been notably low in the recent three budget referents. It is said that each budget referendum costs fifteen to two thousand dollars, but more recently, I've heard up to five thousand dollars per vote. The proposed generic ballot could be as easy as other towns in Connecticut shall the budget for the fiscal year July one twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Tallinn Town Council be adopted. A ballot like this one proposed would provide significant cost savings by printing ahead of time and allow all voters to participate more easily. Currently, each time, um, excuse me, under the current system, those who know they will be away for a referendum are often unable to obtain a ballot in advance if the ballots are not printed before their departure. This disenfranchises a significant portion of our population and reduces overall turnout. With a generic ballot, absentee voters could request and receive the, their ballots in a timely manner, similar to how traditional election absentee ballots are handled. This would, this change would ensure that all eligible voters have the opportunity to participate regardless of their physical presence on referendum day. It's also more efficient and cost effective. I urge the town council and the town manager to seriously consider the implementation of a, a generic referendum ballot. Additionally, I would like to suggest that you put a non-binding referendum question on the bottom of a ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the room, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come up.
Caroline Hargraves, twenty-eight, Charles Street. But, um, I'm actually talking to the audience more than we're talking to the town council at this point, because we've talked to you, if you don't listen, it doesn't matter. But to the town members that are online and the town members that are in this room, they don't care. I'm not sure what else we have to say, but sabotaging the budget and the referendum by voting no, they're gonna take your votes. When you fail again, we're gonna be right back where we are right now, with them taking more money, if that's what happens. Listen to what you've heard tonight before you decide how to vote. You're dividing the vote. The referendum will not pass, when we have that many people voting no, make a point. They don't care about your point, the point is not being made, we're going to lose more when we've already lost so much. The town, the superintendent and the school system needs a budget to be able to start planning, whatever that may be, for next year. No longer we drag this out, we won't be taken away, and we'll never get there. So I understand that people are upset. I don't want to vote yes either. I don't like this budget, I hate this budget. I cannot believe that I live in a town that does not support our school system. Here I am. Vote yes on the budget and pass it, because if we don't, this does not stop. And then, come November, think about where we are right now, and how we get these people out of their seats. And that is all that I have to say, but please, 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 think twice before you make your vote, in what is really at stake.
Thank you. Online, we have Rebecca Doster.
Hi guys, Rebecca Doster, sixty-eight, old Stafford Road. Um, happy Pride Month with everybody. I love, uh, I wish the actual town, like, actually celebrated it and did more for the Pride community, but that's a whole nother story. Um, I do want to say to the four council members who went from that fifty-four to that six forty-five, I'm looking for some transparency on that. I, as a voter and as a member of this community, community, would really like to know how we went from taking twenty-seven thousand from the last referendum to six forty-five, or whatever it is from the Board of Ed this time, with only a separation of twenty-six votes. That, to me, tells me that we are not being heard, the, the four council members, um, you're say you're listening to us, but yet, I've sent in emails and I haven't heard anything back from you guys. I'm just looking for some supportive information from you guys as to where and how you came up with your numbers, maybe something to help me see where you guys are coming from with this. Um, with just ignoring the emails and not really listening to us and just deducting from the Board of Ed, I do feel like it's hurting our community more than it's building us back together. Um, if this referendum fails this next time around, I'm really asking you guys to really look into why we are getting the no's. Um, instead of looking at it as people are asking us to make it less, less, less. I don't know if that's the case right now. I think there's a lot of the people in this town right now are asking for us to increase, especially for the Board of Education. Um, the education, I bet if we asked every single one of you up here, although Jacob, you're a little young, so maybe not so much you, but why did we come to this community? Why did we come to Tallinn to begin with? And for me personally, I've been in this town for forty-five years, I was raised in this town. I left for a little bit, started children, my children in school in East Hartford, and came back by second grade. It was the education that brought us back to this town. Um, and I think when we start looking at why people are coming to this town, education is probably a big, big, big part of it. Uh, um, so to the four council members who, you know, went from that twenty-seven mark to that six fifty approximately mark, I'd really like some transparency on that and a little explanation as to how it was so easily voted on last week by the, or whenever it was, by the four of you. Um, and maybe just respond to some emails. I know you guys are all busy, you guys are all doing so many things for this town. Um, and I appreciate that wholeheartedly, I truly, truly do. But I do feel like we need to hear from you guys more as to why and how you got there. Um, so, thank you so much, um, and I do, as much as I would like to vote yes this time around, unfortunately, for myself and my household, I believe um, it's probably gonna be a no this time around. Um, and I hope that when you guys reconvene afterwards, if this budget fails this next time, that you'll start to consider, okay, maybe it's not a decrease that we need. Um, it's maybe, okay, we, we should, we need to focus more on the Board of Ed, and maybe there's some other town services that we need to, to look at. Thank you guys so much. I hope you have a wonderful night and good luck with everything.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
I'm laughing once, it's eight Mountain Spring Road. I think I'm the one person that is not, that is not commenting on the budget proposal here tonight. Unfortunately, I do not have the luxury of commenting on the budget, because I'm dealing with a base need that the town has taken away from me, clean drinking water. To reiterate yet again, the town is contaminated my well, and this is still an issue eight years running. I hope that there is an end in sight to this issue that is plaguing my home. Given the most reasoned attempt at drilling a vital well, my fourth in the property and the second at the town's expense is getting tiresome to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Jamie.
Hey, everyone, Jamie Davis, twenty-three, Johnson Road. Um, I'm gonna try to keep this pretty quick. Um, I want to point out, I don't support this budget. I feel like the change from this go-around was pretty drastic and somewhat extreme. Um, I want to ask that the uh, town council will consider increasing the budget if we have a larger margin of no votes this go-around, because every single parent I speak, spoke to, we don't agree with this budget. The other thing I want to point out is these two-week windows for voting, they don't allow for absentee ballots to be mailed. So when people are traveling, they completely miss out on a chance to vote, which just disenfranchises a whole set of our community, especially with end of year and parents and travel and school, people just can't make it. They're not in town, and they need the ability to mail. So, you know, as Liz suggested before, if we have ballots that are generic, that might be an option, or maybe some exit polls, like, I voted no because this budget is too low and these cuts are hurting the schools. I, I think that might give us a better picture than blindly going in over and over again. You know, and every single time, we're just blindly lowering the budget, opposed to thinking, why are people voting no? Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Online, we have Bethany Lesko.
Uh, Bethany Lesko, twenty-six, Deer Meadow. So just piggybacking on my initial comments and story about how my thirteen-year-old daughter came home to me today and told me a story about the teacher unknowingly packing up their, their classroom. Um, and I, I was sitting on the deck at the time, and I was looking around and think, looking at the sky and this beautiful kind of trees in, in Tallinn and thinking, this is such a great town overall. But here we have these chosen people who are choosing to make our children see that they just don't care. And as a licensed social worker, I'm thinking, here I am, working my life to be the speech of others, be the talk of others, help others. And I have a town who is willing to show my thirteen-year-old, and also my eleven-year-old, that, you know what? Sorry, you know, figure it out, go without this, go without that, you'll figure it out in life eventually. And it's really saddened me, and I think that, um, there are many people on this council who came into this way before budget season started with a knowledge of, this is how we're gonna vote, we're gonna vote it till it just drills down people to endless, just depression. And you know what? You have done that. You've killed a lot of spirit in town and a lot of spirit of your teachers and your students, and I, I just can't support the people that I see in front of me, and I might not be in the room tonight, I might not be, um, you know, looking at you in the eyes, but I can tell you that the town knows there are people on that council who are smug in their affect and smirking and don't believe in the children of Tallinn. Um, and, and we see that. And so, I hope you sleep well at night, knowing that what you're doing affects the later graduates and affects kids and affects them as adults. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Get it up one day. George George, Fisher Game Road. You guys don't listen to me, I'm a lifetime resident. And if you started at two point nine, we would have never had any of this stuff. Two point nine is, is like, I don't give a, you know what? And people just pass it, or they don't come out and even vote. But when you start with the numbers over four, five, getting those areas, you get people's back. So what happens is then they all come out and vote, and then it goes down, it goes down, it goes down, because you got everybody's attention. So for future reference, next year, start at two point nine, it'll all be over, one vote, and it's done. Another thing is, uh, we need to get like a, a headhunter in this town, somebody that can get us business. Everybody wants money, and you know, money you need for schools, fine, businesses, one ninety-five to the town line should be all businesses. Restaurants, whatever you can get in, hotels, motels, who cares, put them all in it. We need money and you can't, because my family, being a lifetime resident, we went from twenty-eight, my family, not as my sister and I. Because you chased everybody out of town because of these budgets. I've got a son in Florida, and I've got another, a daughter in Andover, they can't afford these kind of taxes. You, you push out all the working people in town. And it's only the people that have the nice fancy houses and fancy, and I, I, I'm a parent, I understand, I'm a grandparent. I understand about the kids. I'm not anti-kids. I'm like, where are we getting money? We gotta stop spending money on niceties, like, uh, uh, ice creams and, and, and what is it, other things, you know, like, uh, uh, cricket and ball, and baseball, and all these other things, those are all niceties. What we need to do is concentrate on the things we gotta have. We gotta have school, we gotta have a town, we gotta have roads cleared, things like that, those are gotta have. Everything else is a nicety, and right now, we don't have those kinds of things. And, and like on a property, why do we need more stupid property in this town? It's non-taxpayer. It's nice to have, be able to walk through, there's enough parks and places to walk in this town already. I understand it, but it's a nicety. Go a little bit further to the nearest park that you want to walk in or something, that's nearest to you. But you, you, you can't keep taking more land in and, and not being able to tax it. It's another big thing of ours. You know, we, we stop having, let things go like private, like the roller rink, and like, uh, what Sears hardwood. They just burned it, just passed that last week. You're putting pickleball in there, you're gonna charge everybody, they're gonna have leagues, a banquet center. That's what we should have in town, bring in business that does things like that. Uh, it's just so frustrating. Anyway, so that's my, my opinion. Next year, just start at two point nine, it always passes. You go over three, you start getting the people out. Lifetime resident, and if people have things to say, like they do tonight, where are they the rest of the year? Usually, it's you, Seven, it's Lisa, their bed, and Sean and myself. Nobody else ever shows up all year long. And then they wait until it's a crisis, and they all get their back. Well, not those people, what's the problem? If you've got something to say, show up all year long, show your support, show what you feel for the town. And what, what you, what you need to guide town. And stop coming up with more ways of spending money and concentrate on the things that we need.
Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Andrew.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Andy Mangefico, seven Lorraine Drive. You know, it's okay to disagree. It's okay that people don't think the same way that I do or that other people do. But there's a process, and the process is listening to everyone, it's taking everyone's considerations. It's not going in with, you know, a predetermined plan and preconceived notions, and it's supposed to be a learning endeavor. Doesn't seem like that's what's been happening lately. It seems like, you know, the, the, the town has spoken. A lot of people saying, we're, we're gonna vote no, a lot of people saying, there's no point in talking to the council. Might as well just address a fellow residents, because the council doesn't care. I hope you're listening to that message, because I truly believe it now. The council, certain members of the council, that unfortunately are making up a majority. We won't do the name and shame right now, but that, maybe that's what has to happen, but don't care. You're laughing, you're, you know, you're laughing in meetings, you're laughing at posts and things like that. You know, when people are expressing themselves, it's pathetic. Like, it's shameful and it's absolutely pathetic, the ones who are doing it, and I think you all know who you are. So, I advocated for voting no for the budget. And I did that with the hope that the council might actually think about that. Now, after things I've learned and just kind of watching the, the council and watching people, there's no way that's gonna happen. If we vote no, it's gonna be, hey, free for all, let's cut more, let's cut more, let's, you know, let's try to say that the six hundred and forty-five thousand was a coincidence and not, you know, not what was, not trying to cut the geothermal amount. But that's just, that's a load of crap, I'm sorry. So, I'm gonna advocate that everyone not listen to me when I said vote no and vote yes, because the council does not care, at least the majority of them don't. So fellow residents, please vote yes if you, if you support education, because otherwise, you're gonna lose more. And that's just what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Yes, Mary Rose Bearic, thirty-seven, Ryan Road.
Yes, Mary Rose DeBerk, thirty-seven Ryan Road. All due respect, I have not lived here all my life, but my son has. He's currently at THF, he's a sophomore. And I want to chat about rebuilding a community where traditions and pride will keep him. Really have nostalgia that he'll want to raise his family here. I think we're pretty confident at this point. It's not because of dad and myself, we volunteer for boosters. It's the every, a lot. We have, we will be at Project Brand. We do golf tournaments, we do all sorts of stuff. It's our hope to instill that in him. But he's not blind to the drama that's happening. It's playing out in our community. Kids are watching. Do better.
Thank you. Anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Cynthia Flynn, one forty-five Anthony Road. I don't do well at public speaking, so I wrote something down just while I was here, so it doesn't include all the thoughts that have come to mind, listening to everybody, but it's just where I could get out, but I think it's important. As a mother of three students in Tallinn School, I'm asking you to keep all of our Tallinn residents in mind when making tough decisions. As was mentioned earlier, we as residents trust you to make decisions in the best interest of our town. We, we don't have that meeting because we're expecting you guys to make those decisions for us. We were twenty-six votes away from passing the budget last time and then the numbers soared. That'd be, I echo the sentiments of Bethany's daughter. I don't feel like you care. In fact, I feel like personal agendas that I'm not even privy to are being pushed and fought over without any concern at all for what residents want or need. I love my community, my neighbors, and yes, my school. So why am I feeling so ashamed of being a Tallinn resident?
Thank you. Rebecca Levine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Rebecca Levine, sixty-four Tallinn Farms Road. My heart is aching. I moved here because, um, my husband and I moved here because I have a daughter who is on the spectrum. And I have another one, um, who needed a little help getting going. And they both blossomed. Now my daughter is being told at the high school that electives are not going to happen. She wanted to work with children like herself to make them feel better about themselves, to help them get through what she gets through every day. And child development was lost last year. This year, more electives are being taken off. And she's not doing what she would like to do. I moved here because this town is beautiful. The people were so nice and caring and welcoming. I don't know what has happened. I don't understand. My eleven-year-old, who is in sixth grade, she's young, first sixth grader. She's upset because I said possibly she may not be going to Tallinn High School. Because what she may want to do may not be there when she gets to that high school. And that upsets me. It's a beautiful high school. But I don't understand. I spoke before, it fell on deaf ears. Some of you, yes, definitely heard, but I don't understand. I'm getting emotional too and I'm, I, Cynthia Flynn, I, I hear you and I'm, I'm so grateful for the student that actually came up. As a freshman, that is huge, who actually spoke. Um, I congratulate you on that for your, your bravery. I am beyond upset as to what is going on. I don't want to move. I love my house. I don't live in a fancy house, as someone has said. I can't be there because I have to be home because my daughter has epilepsy and can't be left home alone. My daughter, my husband works late. My house needs siding. We all have troubles. We all can get money somehow, somewhere. There are grants. There are state grants, there is state funding that can help you. If you can't afford it, look for it. Look for help, but please stop doing this to our kids, please. My daughter is upset, both of them. What are we going to do? Where is she going to go for, for college? What is my youngest going to look forward to? She's already upset and she's eleven and a half. Come on, we can do better, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Last chance. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Seeing no further participation, we shall move to item sixteen, which is adjournment, is there? Most adjournment.
Yes, would.
There's second. Any objection to adjournment? Any objections? Any objections? So without objection, we are adjourned.